It is now six o'clock PM. I would like to welcome everyone to the Rockdale County Board of Education regular work session. I am calling this meeting to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Can I get a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? A motion has been made to approve the agenda by Ms. North and second by Ms. Palmer. Any oppose? The motion carries six to zero. All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. This is a time when we allow citizens the three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the decorum of the meeting. I would like to welcome. None? Okay. So, there are no visitors tonight. Since there's no visitors, let's move to the next agenda item, which is the cabinet updates. Dr. Oats, would you please present?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Pritchett will be coming forth to share some important updates on some instructional resources and materials. Ms. Pritchett?
I'm going to jump in for Mrs. Pritchett. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Board members and Dr. Oats. I'm going to start us off today with a very brief presentation. But this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and it's also Youth Art Month. And so, in honor of those two events, we commissioned some fine art students to create a very special portrait for each of you. And so, we'd like to present those to you at this time. And so, what we're going to do is ask that you come up and receive your portrait that the students developed so that we can take a picture of you along with your portraits to return back to those students who worked so hard on these beautiful designs that we have today. So, I'll begin first with our Board Chairman. Thank you. Ms. Pamela Brown, if you'll come up, please. Dr. Meehan could not be here tonight, but she helped to coordinate getting these done. But we certainly, I think as you see them, you'll be amazed at the work that the students have done.
Can they help?
Yeah, well, I need a picture of both of them.
This is so beautiful. Somebody drew me?
Yes, ma'am.
Some of our very talented students.
Okay, well, let me capture that on film.
Students, fine art students. They're not here tonight, but that's why we want to give them the pictures, send these pictures.
Where's the camera? The camera's up there.
Camera's up there.
Thank y'all so much. Thank you, students. I really do appreciate this. I've never had a photo like this before. Yes.
When everybody?
Y'all stay down here.
Yes, let's get Mrs. Duncan. We have your pictures as well.
Oh, wait till you see this. They're so talented.
Hey, thank you. Look at you.
You look like your daughter.
Mr. Barksdale?
Oh, Mr. Barksdale. Let me see.
That's a good one.
Oh, wow, that's nice. Stay down here, Mr. Barksdale. We're going to take a little picture.
Mrs. Jackson Ledd is not here, but definitely you all can see her picture as well.
Oh, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, I look so pretty. Look at me.
Ms. North?
Because you saw it.
The mom said, "Oh."
So, you know who the mother is? Ms. Palmer? Ms. Jones, we have yours as well.
You'll go this way to the other line, then I want him to talk to her.
Aw.
That is so nice.
Now, if you'll come over here, then I don't have anybody behind you. That way, just a little bit. Perfect.
We also have one for our superintendent, Dr. Oats.
Dr. It's still staying kind of in front of same booth. Aw, that's good.
Getting them.
Aw, look, look how cute. Okay, Ms. Duncan. All right, on three, now smile and look at me. One, two, three. All right, I got all of you.
All right, now that we have those good smiles on your faces from our students, it's that time of year. So, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Board members, Dr. Oats, Cabinet and guests. Tonight, I'm going to present seven action items on behalf of the Curriculum and Instruction Department to renew some resources that we are currently using and will are requesting to use next year. The first one, the superintendent is for Renaissance Learning. Our Star Reading and Star Math Programs. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Renaissance Learning's Star Assessments as our Universal Reading and Math screener totaling $209,430. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and the General Counsel. Rationale, Renaissance Learning's Star Assessments measuring reading comprehension and mathematics achievement levels of elementary, middle, and high school students. Assessment data will be used to inform instruction and differentiate interventions. Financial impact, we're asking for, from general funds, and the renewal is contingent upon approval of the fiscal year 24 budget. The next action item is for Imagine Learning Edgenuity as a renewal. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Imagine Learning Edgenuity as a digital content platform for grades six through 12 totaling $199,412. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and General Counsel. Rationale, Edgenuity is an online learning solution that provides customizable curriculum for blended and personalized learning, unit or standard recovery, and credit recovery. Again, the financial impact, $199,412 from general funds. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the fiscal year 24 budget, and you'll see that we have a breakdown of the cost for grades six through eight and nine through 12. The next action item is for Saxon Phonics and Spelling as a renewal. The recommendation is superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Saxon Phonics materials totaling $126,518.72. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and General Counsel. Rationale, all K through two classrooms utilize Saxon Phonics and Spelling to conduct explicit and systematic phonics instruction. The resources have recently been updated, and a portion of the kits are consumable and need to be replaced yearly. We're requesting funds from general funds. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the fiscal year 24 budget. Our next action item is for Read and Wonders as a renewal. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Read and Wonders materials totaling $306,774.13. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract between the superintendent and General Counsel. Rationale, the district's six-year access to previously adopted elementary English language arts resources will end in June 2023. The Georgia Department of Education has reconvened working committees to revise ELA standards during the 2022-2023 school year for implementation in 2025-2026. We're requesting general funds, and the renewal is contingent upon the approval of the FY '24 budget. You'll see a breakdown here for grades one through three and what it will cost along with grades four through five. Think Circle renewal. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Think Circle writing licenses totaling $194,400. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and General Counsel. Our rationale, Think Circle is designed to support schools and districts in increasing student achievement in reading and writing across disciplines through rigorous differentiated content and instruction for English language arts, social studies, science, and math. Funds are requested from general funds pending the renewal, the approval of the FY '24 budget. Next is Savice, My Perspective as a Renewal. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Savice's My Perspectives totaling $231,661. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and General Counsel. The district's six-year access to previously adopted ELA resources ended in June 2020. The Georgia Department of Education has postponed revising ELA curriculum standards. We're delaying the learning resources adoption process until standards are revised. As a result, ELA learning resources are needed for next school year. We are requesting renewal from general funds contingent upon the approval of FY '24 budget. And last but not least, action item for Read 180, System 44, again for literacy. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of Read 180, System 44, Universal Stage B, student subscriptions and instructional resources from Hope, Mifflin, and Harcourt totaling $88,532.12. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and General Counsel. Rationale, Read 180 and System 44, Universal Stage B materials consist of student subscriptions along with classroom packages and literacy intervention licenses for teachers. These resources are needed to support the secondary intervention program. Financial impact, we are requesting funds from general funds contingent upon the approval of FY '24 budget. Any questions? Okay, no questions. That's the booty seat. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Come on up. Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Board members and Superintendent Oats. Good evening. I will continue the long train of action items tonight. But before I get started, should give you a quick update on Heritage High School. We did get the carpet squares all in for Heritage High School in the area that was flooded as planned and expected, so we appreciate that work by the teams that were there during the break. And they'll finish up this summer with the tiles. All right. We have memorandum of understanding between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County Board of Education. The superintendent will recommend that the Board approve the memorandum of understanding between the City and Board of Education for the City of Conyers' use of the property located here, 960 Pine Street, Conyers, Georgia, for its red, white, and boom, Independence Day celebration. The City wishes to use this property as it has the last few years. This memorandum between the City and us will facilitate the City's use of this property. No financial impact. If you come early, you'll get a good seat for the fireworks. The second one is, I want to do a little explaining on this. This is not a purchase action item for buses tonight. This is for the contract with ARC, which gave the funding to Georgia Department of Transportation. So, I'll read the action item, and then I will share a few points of data with you concerning this one. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale Board of Education approve the bus purchase agreement contract between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Rockdale County Board of Education for the purchase of six buses. This contract is contingent upon Superintendent and General Counsel's approval. The rationale is that we are the recipient of the Atlanta Regional Commission's bus 80%, 20% purchase, 80% on their part, 20% on our part. Rockdale County has granted six buses per year over three one-year agreements with GDOT, the administering agency for this grant. We will be responsible for the purchase cost amount over the $110,833.33 per bus. The current cost per bus is $133,359 as of December, our last prices we got from our vendors. GDOT will pay 80% of the $665,000 for the first year, which is the 2022 purchases. And as you look at the financial impact, the Fire 32 is their 80% of the 665. We will pay the 133, which comes up to that $110,000, which was the maximum they would pay for a bus when we began this contract. And then we will pay the difference out of East Plots 5 of $135,154. So, you may remember that we were granted this back in late 21, I believe it was. September 14th of '22, excuse me, let's go back to '21 first, June 21. Our Rockdale Department of Transportation reached out to us because this grant had to go through the county at that point in time. In September of that year of 2021, they notified us that GDOT would work directly with us, and we begin the long process of getting this contract. It was a three-year contract to begin with, with the purchase of 18 buses, $110,000 being the max they would pay per bus. We would pay 20%, they would pay 80%, reimburse us 80% on these buses. And so, the long process began. Mr. Flanagan has worked hard over and over and over again with them to make sure the contract was compliant with contracts that we can have in the system. Back in 14 of '22, September '22, the contract was modified to a one-year contract. We will still have 18 buses over three years, but they only wanted to give us a contract, and that's what I'm bringing to you tonight, so it's for the first six buses. As late as this last Monday, they were changing the contract and the verbiage in it, and thankfully Santana Flanagan, our General Counsel, was right on it and got it back to me so we could have it to you tonight. So, this is getting approval next week when you approve it. And so, you sign it, then we'll send it out to them. They did not want me to include a purchase tonight, and there's still some unanswered questions from their part as far as the how fast we can get the second order of buses purchased, because we've got 18 altogether. It's still a good deal because they're paying 80% of 110. If they had moved in a timely fashion to begin with, but that's spilt milk now, but it wouldn't have cost us anything extra besides the 20%. But that's what we have with GDOT, and that's that action item. I will bring you two more of those over the next 12 months, and hopefully we'll get all those buses in place. The next action item is the School Safety and Security Proposed Revision to Board Policy, GCAB. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale Board of Education approve the proposed revisions to this Board Policy, GCAB, interviews and searches of students as presented. The revisions to this Board to clarify its guidance on when, where, and how the district may conduct student interviews and searches. And on this page, it's highlighted the different areas in this particular paragraph, basically inserting weapon detection systems that we have purchased and using. They have crossed out the area accessible by students and changed that to used by the school district, which may, and you have the distance there, but it's not limited to all these other areas, including trailer and mobile units. So, it's expanded our coverage, and thank you, Mr. Flanagan, for working on that for us. And that concludes my presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booty Seat.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, Board members, guests. So, tonight I come before you with a revision to a Board Policy, GAN. And so, this came about, I always think it's important to know the why. And so, working with the Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Health Department, Dr. Richardson was working on an anti-vaping for students. And so, with that came some policy review. And while we were reviewing that, we all agreed that our current policy did fit the spirit of what they were trying to do, but we also are always looking, can we make it stronger? So, with that, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the proposed revisions to Policy, GAN, Employee Tobacco Use as Presented. The purpose of the revision to Board Policy is to reiterate that employees cannot display or use tobacco or tobacco products in any district vehicle or property, and the underlying portion is the change. And this restriction includes non-school hours, 24 hours per day, seven days a week, just to make it very explicit in our expectations. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oats, members of the Board. I'll be going over the preliminary financial statements for February, and I have one action item at the end. All right, the revenue for the month of February is 10.1 million. The revenue year-to-date is 141.9 million, which is 78.4% of our budget. Last February, we received 10.1 million, 136 million year-to-date, which is 79.4% of our budget. Spending for the month of February, 15.6 million. Year-to-date, we expended 123 million, which is 66.7% of our budget. Last February, we expended 14 million, 112.7 million year-to-date, which is 65.8% of our budget. Our outstanding encumbrances are $1,678,460. Our fund balance at the end of February is approximately 57.5 million, and last February, we had 52.2 million. Assets, 64.3 million approximately, liabilities, 6.7 million. And those are our third-party payments that will be cleared up the next, when I do our final report. And then our fund balance at 57.5 approximately. The action item is for replacing our old and non-functioning copiers at our schools and departments. So, the superintendent recommends that the Rockdale Board of Education approve the Sheba American Business Solutions in the amount of $319,983.76 to purchase new copiers for our CPS schools. The contract is continued on approval of the superintendent and the General Counsel. Selected vendor was based on exceptional bidding under Quarfa purchase, Georgia statewide contract, contract number 9999 SPD 000137-003 for printers, MFPs, and related technologies. The scope of this product is to provide replacement aging and non-functioning encumbrances with better copy solutions, which will improve the efficiency of copiers district-wide for all our schools and departments. The financial impact is $319,983.76 out of Spots 5 funds. And here's the breakdown, 41 will be going to our schools, 16 to our departments, for a total of 57. Any questions?
Thank you. Dr. Oats?
Madam Chairwoman, I don't have any formal remarks to update this month.
Thank you. Okay, the Cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I would like to ask the Board members to please review the information. Would the Board like to take a recess or continue with the meeting? We'll move on. Please review the February 2023 Board Minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business, and there is no new business. The Cabinet has provided an overview of the action items 1 through 13 to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda? Is there a second? Okay, a motion to consider the action items 1 through 13 under a consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Mr. Barksdale and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, there is a need for the Board to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. North and a second by Ms. Duncan. All in favor? All right, the motion carries six to zero.
But I was gonna be trying.
We got this. Thanks to you. It is now six forty-two, and the board is back into open session. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to rescind its prior February the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three vote to assign Dr. Anthony Browning, currently Assistant Principal at High Tower Trail Elementary School, to Assistant Principal at Pine Street Elementary School?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and seconded by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Dr. Browning will remain at High Tower Trail Elementary School as Assistant Principal, and the Assistant Principal vacancy at Pine Street will be posted. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Dr. Denise Richardson, currently K-12 Coordinator for Science, Health, and Physical Education, to Director of Curriculum and Instruction effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Akita.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, seven, six to zero. With no further business to discuss. Oh, okay, so we have another executive session, and it is six forty-four, the board will go into, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Jones and seconded by Ms. Duncan to go into executive session. All in favor? All right, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. It is now seven forty-five. The board is out of executive session with no further business to discuss. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
There's a, a motion has been made to adjourn the meeting by Ms. North and second by Ms. Jones. And is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. Good night everyone.